Believe any, all the public is all unmuted. Hearing none, we'll close the public forum at 6:49.
You need to call it to order first.
Okay, call it to order, apologize. And, thank you. Hearing no caller in the public that would like to speak, Margot is announced for the last four minutes. Okay, we're gonna close the public forum at 6:49. Thank you for the counselors. As I mentioned, you can, the chat will remain open. Dave Wright and Margot will monitor. Everyone will be put on master mute and we will reconvene to the town council at 8:00 PM promptly. Thank you.
See you later.
Order at 8:05 today's main. Thank you very much, everyone, for joining us. I'm gonna first start off with the invocation and pledge and ask Counselor Poisson. Ken, are you with me?
Yes.
Take it away.
Hey, if we could all bow our heads. Dear God, it seems like there is a lot of uncertainty around us. So many people who need prayers. Today, we pray, oh Lord, for those whose health is compromised by the coronavirus or other health issues, for those who suffer from the economic impact of the virus in travel, manufacturing, hospitality, energy, or so many other industries, for healthcare workers and first responders and other public servants who put themselves in harm's way for us, for our leaders of the world, our countries, states, big cities, and small towns as they seek to manage this challenge. God, it can be overwhelming, but you tell us over and over again not to be afraid. Show me how to trust in you. As I examine my heart, help me to turn away from my concern with self and turn my heart, hands, and prayers toward the concerns of others. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Richard Stevens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And just more. Thank you, Ken. Okay, we're gonna begin. I will, first item on the agenda is an approval of a minutes from the special meeting on April 14, 2020. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Laura Dancho, District 10. I motion to approve this.
That motion? Excellent, Ms. Dancho, I have your motion. Do I have a second to this, Dancho? Mr. Harden, I see you, okay? Second by Dave Harden.
Second by Dave Harden.
It's bad, Dave.
Dave, yeah, it's pretty bad. I saw your video is ahead of your audio, so you know. But I, alright, so I will, Mr. Harden, I did get Mr. Harden's second. Any discussion in that? Okay, hearing none. We're gonna do, we're gonna do all the votes tonight via roll call, so Ms. Paquette.
This is Margot Paquette, the council clerk. This is the roll call vote for item one, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden. I see your mouth moving, and it looks like you were saying yes.
Okay.
Mr. Khan. Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Dancho.
Yes.
Mr. Pia.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, Margot. 10-0. Next item on the agenda, being there are no cellular communications communications. Read the mayor's report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. All the departments in the town of Stratford are actively monitoring the coronavirus. We are in regular contact with our state and federal agencies. Local officials are remaining up to date on the guidance from the Federal Centers of Disease Control, the Public Safety Departments, and that they're working in concert with the State Department of Public Health and Centers for Disease Control. Though town buildings are closed to the public, town departments continue to operate and provide service to our communities. Employees rotate, who comes into the building, check email, and respond into immediate needs of constituents. To that end, the Board of Assessment Appeals has offered virtual meetings to applicants who've applied for their assessment review. Twenty-five people have opted for sit-down meetings, while 48 will meet virtually. The Health Department is in its 12th operational week or period responding to COVID-19. In Connecticut, there have been 33,765 confirmed cases and 3,008 deaths. As of today, in Stratford, we have 663 laboratory confirmed cases, 61 deaths. Seventy-two percent of the deaths occurred in assisted living or nursing care facilities. The department continues to monitor the health status of the town, calling all those who are reported to us through Connecticut DPH, Disease Surveillance System, that test positive, providing education for self-isolation for those with symptoms and quarantine for those in the households. Our school nurses have made calls to capture information on recovery. We provide symptom logs and guidance to all the resources for them should they need assistance in obtaining prescriptions, groceries, etc. PPE is distributed to home healthcare providers, dentists, and Stratford VNA. Our Health Department is one of 20 that is serving as the beta tester for the state's plan on contract tracing. Community messaging and outreach remains the core of our response. Community services with the Stratford Family Partnership has launched the path forward with a postcard that reminds families to take advantage of quality time they are now afforded and to talk to our kids. We continue with messaging on various platforms, social media, Everbridge, regarding social distancing and Governor Lamont's executive orders. We've reached out to largest establishments such as Walmart, Home Depot, and the grocery stores. Hold on just one second.
And if everyone could just remind, make sure they're on mute while the mayor's giving her a talk, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that, the background noise. And I just lost my connection, thank you. I should have joined you, Chris Timiak, in the office.
Greg, Greg, can you hear?
Yes, hi.
I, give me one second, Greg. I got everyone muted except for the mayor. If you could mute yourself right now. Thanks, y'all.
Seems to me that we are having technical difficulties accessing through Citrix, David. Okay, so we've also reached out to largest establishments such as Walmart, Home Depot, and the grocery stores to make sure they're implementing the best practices to keep their employees and customers safe while providing good essential services. The past eight weeks, Sedexo has been providing bag lunches with the additional breakfast for seven of the eight weeks. Sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-five bag meals have been distributed to the five sites, at Nichols School, Franklin School, Johnson House, Sterling House Community Center, and South End Community Center. Over the last 10 days, on average, 487 meals were distributed or bags were distributed daily. Senior Services distributed 120 grocery bags filled with fresh produce and dairy staples, and the Stratford Housing Authority distributed 350 grocery bags to seniors and disabled residents. Economic development continues to work with the businesses on social distancing protocols and the reopen Connecticut plans. Currently, 28 restaurants will be open for outside dining on May 20. First responders continue to provide service and protect Stratford. Those that are working will have PPE, masks, gloves, cemetery supplies available to them. As the lead of Regions One Public Health Emergency Response Initiative, Stratford works with Deans to receive and distribute PPE to 14 towns, which is intended to be redistributed to acute care and community care providers. Regions One distributes inside of Sherwood Island, State Park, and Westport, and with the intent of weekly distribution. I think we pick up tomorrow, as a matter of fact. Long-term care, assisted living, residential group homes will also be receiving PPE for their supplies. In Stratford specifically, we distributed to Stratford VNA and surgical masks with N95 face shields are actually distributed as well. And Dispatch continues to use the Protocol 36, the pandemic protocol. Fifty percent of the calls screened have been for sick, flu-like, or COVID symptoms. We're fully staffed in Dispatch and deep cleaning is ongoing. Staffs are briefed weekly with evolving COVID situation. EMS, actually, the May 17th is the start of National EMS Week. Staff are being pre-screened for symptoms as soon as they arrive before punching in for work. EMS headquarters is deep cleaning three times a week, and our call volume is mostly dominated by COVID calls. The Police Department continues to enforce social distancing guidelines. This directive requires officers to be diligent and check for social distancing violation in recreational areas. Crew patrols work the beaches and seawalls on Friday through Sunday. The Fire Department has been very active as well, keeping up with COVID concerns, including managing the inventory of PPE. They have been diligent about cleaning their gear at calls and afterwards, cleaning and disinfecting the apparatus as needed, as well as maintaining an adequate supply of cleaning products at the stations. The Fire Marshal's Office has also been responding to complaint fire calls, scheduled appointment, and timely inspections. The Fire Marshal's Office is very involved with health and economic development in assisting the restaurants and small business back to work on May 20. Police, Fire, and EMS have been doing their drive-bys and encouraging folks with their sirens and lights and keeping spirits high. Construction has been ongoing on the Fire Department on Huntington Road, the second-floor renovation, and hopefully, firefighters will move back into their renovated house next week. Public Safety and EMD through communities' support remains high with donations of PPE included for the first responders. Larry and Jermaine are working on the 30-to-90-day-plus operations through a planning call, reopening of the school, providing PPE to businesses, 80 last week and 25 tomorrow. They're also providing training videos on how to use PPE properly, and they're working to acquire enough masks to provide to the general public. The community is rallying in support of one another in a manner that's truly reflective of our hometown. Donations of food, PPE, masks, and offer to help have been outpouring from everyone who wants to help. That concludes my report. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any questions for the mayor?
Hearing none.
Hearing none, Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
I do. I had on Greg Hand, question for the mayor. Actually, two questions, if it's permitted.
Go ahead, question for the mayor.
Thank you for the report, Madam Mayor. My first question has to do with, these questions were, have been raised over the last eight weeks. The town is increasing its long-term debt service in order to balance the proposed budget. But it's not explained the financial impact of that increased bonding in terms of its impact on the principal and its impact on the interest rates that need to be paid. Is that some information that you could help us acquire?
Counselor Ken, what long-term bonding are you talking about?
The source of the bond premium for last year's budget and this year's budget, the 3.5 million, that derives from the bonding. And instead of paying off long-term debt, we're using that 3.5 to balance the budget. And that's going to increase our interest costs and our going. I was hoping that.
Counselor, I couldn't hear the last part of your question or statement, but your interpretation of this is incorrect. I remember Jay Wahlberg explaining this last year. Chris, Chris Timiak, if you would explain to the counselor what the 3.5 million is being used for. Thank you.
Oh, Counselor Ken, when the bond closeouts occurred last year, the money was gonna go back to the taxpayers, which is exactly what we're doing. We're doing it in the form of the three-and-a-half million last year, the three-and-a-half million this year. That was, that was the plan when the bond closeout occurred. That's what we informed the council we were gonna do, and that's what's occurred in the budget we put forward.
A qualifying question for Chris Timiak through the chair.
You may.
A few months ago, the council.
Through the mayor.
Yeah, we approved refinancing of bonds to save $800,000 for 2021, but that $800,000 is not represented in the proposed budget. The bond reduction, the interest did not go down by 800,000. Can that be explained?
Yes, that can be explained. We haven't gone through with that bond refinance for the 800,000. We did not want to book the revenue in there when the mayor's proposed because we weren't sure what the closing interest rate was. So, the hope was when the actual closing date occurred with the bond, but when we sold the bonds or we refinanced the bonds, the bond market fell out due to COVID, and the actual plan has been put, I wanna say, on ice until the market comes back. And we're monitoring on a weekly basis with our bond council, but yet, we don't have at this time a bond sale in place, so we don't, we don't know what number to incorporate in the budget because it hasn't, it hasn't gone through yet.
So Greg, so what else? Any other, so did I answer your justified question, Madam Mayor, through you?
Questions to the mayor.
Any other questions for the mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Paul Taveras, District 3.
Yeah, I see, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Hoyt, how are you? And I appreciate your daily briefs on what's going on with the virus in our town. Certainly appreciate that. I'm gonna give a brief summation, I'm gonna ask you a question. This is more of an observation, since I've been on the council for about four months. There is an omission of decorum on this council. The atmosphere is more of an us-versus-them mentality.
Mr. Taveras.
I wanna ask the questions, Chairman. I just wanted to, am I gonna be allowed to finish?
I would like, if you have a question for the mayor, absolutely.
I'm getting to that. Now, can I continue, or am I gonna be cut off?
You may, just please get to your question, that's all I'm asking.
I'm gonna get to my question. Thank you. Through the chair, to the mayor. And what I'm saying is, I'm new to the council, but I'm not new to town government. Been on the BZA for almost four years. And the omission of decorum on here is very, very upsetting to me. When Councilman Ken asks a question, he's representing his district as an elected official, and I've heard some of the open-mic comments, and they were very disconcerting. Okay, I myself have lost.
Point of order, can we?
Are you gonna let me ask your question or not?
Mr. Taveras.
Point of order, here.
Mr. Harden.
Can he ask? Exactly what I'm talking about. You know, Mr. Harden, we don't need any of these antics either. Am I gonna be allowed to finish or not?
Mr. Taveras, I will absolutely allow, as I always do, anybody to speak and ask a question. Report, the point of this part right now is questions for the mayor. For the last 30 seconds, I did let you speak, sir. I'm trying very hard to be very, very professional, it always happens, but please ask a question. I follow the agenda as we always vote out. Please ask a question. I will allow that.
Well, since I'm not allowed to finish my summation, Madam Mayor, do you acquiesce some of the attitudes against some of the counselors on this, on the council, on the board? Since I wasn't allowed to finish, I'm saying, all I'm asking for is some decorum here, and I'm asking your take on it. Maybe you can give me some suggestions, if I'm being hypersensitive? Or what, but do you acquiesce to this current atmosphere of the us-versus-them mentality that pervades on this council?
So Counselor Taveras, I have not been present when there has been assertive debate with the counselors, because that has occurred, as I understand it, at public forum. And that is how you comport yourself and the other counselors comport themselves in dealing with each other. It's not a subject that the mayor would normally weigh in on or get involved with because you are a body of the 10 elected districts, and how you interact with each other is up to you. My job is to administer the town, is to present you a budget, and then to operate with the budget and the policies that you determine together collectively. Previous to this council being here, there was, it was, well, first of all, it was easier because we weren't operating virtually. And when we're together and we can see the interaction between each other, I think it was a more conducive atmosphere. Plus, the makeup of the council was different. So I think that whether you feel that you are having difficulty relating to your fellow counselors, it's something that maybe you could work through personally and privately in small groups that would not have a quorum present.
Through the chair. Any, any other questions for the mayor?
Yes, through the chair.
Okay, another question, Mr. Taveras?
Yes. First of all, thank you, Mayor, and I did reach out to some of the council people. And it's been, it said it was pretty much vile, but, so, I will take your comments. Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor?
Chris, Greg Hand.
Yes, Greg.
Thank you, sir. In regards to what we call overhead allocations to the enterprise funds, a reference has been made to a 2017 report from a consultant municipal financial services. And that report lists a number of shortfalls in regards to the town's administration of WPCA. One of them was asking for a rational allocation of the overhead. And I'd like to ask the mayor if she'd be in favor of a deliberate rational allocation study that we could review prior to voting on the upcoming budget.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair, through you. The most recent report I have on WPCA is from the audit. The auditors that I believe you requested, Counselor Ken, we have enacted many of the recommendations that the auditors have proposed, except the one that says the reimbursement from the, to the town should be 1.1 million instead of 900,000. So if this council, through the WPCA, wants us to act accordingly through a 2017 or 16 report, that's up the council to give that directive.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions for the mayor?
Well, yes, is it up to the council, or is it up to the WPCA?
Greg, are you referring to the question?
Yes, we're referring it to the mayor.
Counselor Ken, if you, if I, you might not have heard me because maybe the reception is not that good, but I said WPCA and then the council.
Ah, thank you. And I'll, I'd like to be referenced to where in the audit it mentions the 1.1 million dollars.
Counselor Ken, I know that CAO Timiak has sent you, and actually, Jay Wahlberg, have sent you this before, so I will find those emails and that document, and I will send it to you tomorrow.
You meant the WPC for legal services, use of the public works garage, etc.
Greg, what's your question?
Oh, I asked if, I mean, I'll look forward to getting the document from Chris. I hope he has it handy. But my question was, could this be the document that we've already noted includes double-charging the WPCA for legal services and the use of the town garage? And other, other quote era.
So Counselor, in your opinion, it is double-charging. In the auditor's opinion, it is not. It is a newer document than what you're referencing from the consultant. So if you already know what I'm talking about, but you'd like me to send it to you again, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No, I don't, well, I'll confirm, I do not know what you're talking about.
This is Connor.
Look forward to receiving it.
This is Counselor.
They'll send it tomorrow. Any other, any other, I have Mr. Poisson who has a question for the mayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was wondering if the social distancing guidelines have been easier to adhere to down at the beaches now that we're not letting out-of-towners onto the beach?
Thank you, Counselor, through you, Mr. Chair. The, it has been somewhat manageable. I think people have a lot of anxiety because of the coronavirus and not knowing how it's affecting different people. We have effectively started taking the beach stickers, as you know, as entrance to the parks. Ironically, this past weekend, we issued some tickets, wrong word, summons, to several non-resident fishermen who got in, who got into the beach area while it was closed to fish at night. So I appreciate our police folks for being so diligent and protecting us as well as they have.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just, a quick question, if you don't mind. This is Laura Dancho, District 10. I wanted to just thank you for all of the really direct communications on the current situation with the COVID virus. And I was wondering if there was a centralized location where maybe some residents could find local people that are making the masks and stuff, where we can connect them in order to get a mask if they can't find one on their own.
Thank you, Laura, that's a great question. We have had an outpouring of volunteers who have been making masks. And Mike Downs, if you can help me remember the name of the group, it's, it's a Stratford, two women that started it, and it's a. Sorry?
I don't remember, to be honest with you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Well, I'll get you that answer, Laura, and send it to you. But they're, they're a great support group, and they do anything like masks or groceries. Or you can get out, they're picking up some prescriptions, and they've been really very, very supportive of. Or yank it out, even picking up some prescriptions, and they've been really very, very supportive of people in the community. And they're one of several groups that are doing these kind of things.
Thank you, that's great, it'd be a great way to connect the residents to resources like that.
Thank you, Laura. All right, I think we're good, all right.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien, Ninth District.
Go ahead, Bill.
For the mayor, I just wanted to thank Mike Downs and the Complete Calm Committee for the great job they're doing on getting people to do the census. As of April 27th, 60.9% of the people in Stratford had completed the census. And that's a great help in the future for the, you know, less knocking on doors, and especially in this time. But I just would request that maybe you could promote it more for the next week or two, to get those that haven't done it yet to finish the census.
Councilor, we most certainly will, and thank you to the Health Director who's on the call, because we have a grant that you, hopefully you'll approve. The name of the group, Councilor Dancho, is Stratford Mutual Aid.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Caitlin? Caitlin, I can't hear you, do you have a question for the mayor, I can't hear any audio. I can't hear you, Caitlin.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to say thank you to Mayor Hoytik and to the communication team and to our Health Department for all the work that they've done. It's appreciated. I do think that we could absolutely do more in setting a good example for residents here in the town. My backyard is Longwood Park, and I'm still getting complaints from residents who are not just in District 2, but would like to come here and walk around in the park. We have the police presence, which is helpful, because we still have large groups of people coming. But coming up Main Street, there's still larger groups of people that are walking around. If they're in a larger group of five, they're not wearing masks, and I just think that we could do better. I think we could always have an opportunity to learn, and this is absolutely a learning experience. But for the protection of everyone here, and the first responders that we do have here in town, and everyone that's working so hard, I think that, as the elected officials here in town, we could maybe think of how we could work on doing some type of public service announcement to help encourage the rest of our community members to stay encouraged, to do the right thing, and to be responsible so that we all help each other.
Madam Mayor, do you have anything to miss?
Sure, you have your own social media network and your own communication outreach platform. So if you take, you know, what I send every day, or devise one yourself and reach out to your constituents, that might be helpful.
Excellent. Thank you all. All right, next item on the agenda, we're going to be moving on to 4.3.1, the ordinance committee, and I will entertain a motion for that item.
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dancho, District 10. Thank you. I move that we approve item 4.3.1.1, an ordinance amending Section 203-9 of the Town Code regarding rules for certain beaches and seasonal parking stickers, and that the second reading of the above titled ordinance be dispensed with, as we have all received copies, and that this be adopted as the second reading, and the foregoing be approved 30 days from passage.
Thank you, Ms. Dancho, do I have a second to this?
Bill O'Brien, Ninth District, I second it.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien, any discussion of this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a roll call, Mr. Paquette?
She's muted.
Margot, we can't hear you, you're muted.
Geez, okay, I'm here. Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 4.3.1.1, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cam?
Yes.
Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo? Thank you, Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yep, I got you, Jim.
Okay.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you all, 10-0. Next item on the agenda, item 4.3.1.2, an ordinance regarding creation of a solid waste remediation special revenue fund. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dancho, District 10. Motion that we approve item 4.3.1.2, an ordinance regarding creation of a solid waste remediation special revenue fund, and that the second reading of this ordinance be dispensed with, as copies have been provided to all council members, and that the same be adopted as a second reading, and the foregoing be and is hereby approved effective 30 days from passage.
Motion by Ms. Dancho, do I have a second to that motion?
Second by Dave Harden, second by Dave Harden.
I have a Mr. Harden for a second, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, call for a roll call vote, Margot?
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 4.3.1.2, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Cam?
Yes.
Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
10-0, thank you, Margot. Next item on the agenda, item 4.3.2 from the Public Works Committee.
That's Mr. Piuson.
Mr. Poissons?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 4.3.2A and B, please.
Motion by Mr. Poissons, do I have a second to that motion?
Laura Dancho.
Second.
I heard Ms. Dancho's second. Any discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Paquette, I'll send it to a roll call.
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 4.3.2A and B, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Cam?
Yes.
Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Margot. Next item on the agenda, item 4.3.3 from the Building Needs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons?
Mr. Chairman, under 4.3.3, I'd like to strike letter F from the agenda, please, this is no longer needed, and we're going to save that $52,000.
Okay, motion to strike by Mr. Poissons, item 4.3.3, letter F. Do I have a second to that?
Second, Dave Harden.
I heard Mr. Harden on the second. Okay, any discussion on this?
Greg Cam?
Go ahead, Greg.
I just want to thank the, we, our package included a weekly report from Turner in regards to the status of the Stratford High School project. I want to thank the Stratford High Committee and Building Needs for having that compiled. It provides a good view forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any other discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none, this is, we're going to be taking a roll call vote to strike item F, Ms. Paquette?
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, roll call vote to strike item F, Agenda Item 4.3.3, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Cam?
Yes.
Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
I heard him say that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Margot. Mr. Poissons, if you'd like to resume the rest of the item, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, under 4.3.3, I'd like to make a motion to approve letters A through E, because those are all of the Stratford High renovation project motions.
Motion to approve item 4.3.3, A through E, being Stratford High together. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second, Dave Harden.
Seconded by Mr. Harden, I heard you, sir, thank you. Any discussion on this? Okay, Margot, roll call?
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 4.3.3, A through E, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Cam?
Yes.
Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Mr. Poissons, only item on, under 4.3.3?
Yes, 4.3.3G, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Poissons, a second?
Second, Bill O'Brien.
I saw, I heard Ms. Dancho first, sorry, Bill. Discussion on the item? Okay, Ms. Paquette?
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 4.3.3G, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Cam?
Yes.
Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor? Mr. Connor?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we're going to move down to ordinances and resolutions, under 6.1.1, an ordinance appropriating $24,650,000 for the pump station renovation and upgrade project. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, you skipped an item.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Leclair, I appreciate it. Item 4.4, Town Attorney's Report, Mr. Hudson, sorry, I still like you, I didn't mean to skip you intentionally.
Quite all right, I have no report, Chris, thank you.
Short and sweet, all right, thank you, sir. Now we'll go to 6.1.1, if that's okay, Mr. Leclair, I believe.
Yes, that would be numerically next in succession, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Through the chair. Chris?
Hold on one second, Greg, so the motion, so I'll entertain the motion for 6.1.1.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6.1.1, an ordinance appropriating $24,650,000 for the pump station renovation and upgrade project.
Mr. Poissons made the motion, I'll second to that motion.
Second.
Greg, you seconded? Greg, you seconded? Okay, seconded by Greg, thank you. Any discussion, I'll open up for discussion. I'm going to, I'm going to just briefly touch on this, being that this is something, this group and the WPCA, being the same body, has worked extensively on for almost the last two years. I'm very excited about this. If you remember, this previous council, we moved it to the phase where I'm going to let Mr. Casey jump on for a moment, being the town engineer, John, and just bring us up to speed in terms of what this package is, and the work we've done so far on this, the pump station renovation.
Yes, this is to renovate five of the town's pump stations that are in age and in need of renovation, that'll be brought up to code with high efficient electrical and mechanical components. And a big component of the work, as we were under design, was to comply with the DEP requirements for coastal resiliency, flood resiliency. And so the stations are going to be renovated to support the structural needs of withstanding the floodwaters and protecting the pump stations from damage during a coastal storm event, so that they can be put right back into, either continue to operate during the storm or put right back into operation following the storm. That, that effort was quite a, quite a big design and costly, cost component of the project. So the project was bid out, and the bids came in in February. And our next step is to award the contract for the contractor and apply for the Clean Water Fund funding that will fund the project. It'll be a 2% loan over a 20-year period. And this bond ordinance is necessary to make the application for the Clean Water Fund loan to the DEP. And that will secure the loan, the town's commitment to the project.
So, Mr. Casey, thank you, and I just want to say thank you for all the work you've put in with time bond on this over the last year and a half. For those, for those who are new to the, to the body, we were, the town of Stratford was approved for all 24 to 25 million of the state's entire 2% financing loan kitty about in 2000, I believe. And then the state has now seen an influx of municipalities applying for that thereafter. So we really lucked out with obtaining all of this at 2%, which is essentially free money in terms of financing. And thank you to John for driving the vote on this. Any, any other discussion on this item?
Chairman, two questions from Greg Cam?
Go ahead, Greg.
First question is, which entity will be responsible for the payment of this bond?
Finance, Mr. Timmyak or Dawn, would you like to answer?
Sorry. Dawn Seago, Finance Director. So, on the books, this is, we apply it towards the WPCA fund. So it's segregated, the bonding, it's segregated. And the Clean Water Fund is on their books. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did, thank you. The second question is, let's look at our municipal bonds, for example, what we're going to do for the CIP. What would be a guesstimate or an average interest rate for a 20-year capital improvement bond? If we were to go through our financing channels?
Just going, are you asking if we were to go out for new current bonding at today's rates, what the rates would be through regular financing, not this being a very special thing through the state? The Clean Water Fund is through the state?
Yes. I was, Chris, trying to draw a comparison.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that last.
He's, so Greg's asking, Dawn, if, if we were, if the town were to go out for bonding today, what rates would, again, knowing the rates change, what would the rates approximately be?
Well, we estimated the rates to be more than 2%. That's why we think the Clean Water Fund was the best way to go, and also was the best way to go. And also, there's other, some other benefits with the Clean Water Fund in terms of that not going on our books immediately. So if you look at the last obligation that the town did, it was over 2%. So I can't really predict the future right now with the market, with the current situation we're in, but it's likely that it would be over 2%.
Thank you, Dawn.
Answer your question.
Any other questions or discussion on this? I'm sorry.
This is Chris Timmyak.
Yeah, you wanted to go?
Yeah, I can add a little, I just did a quick look of it, and the 20-year bond rate for the town is above 2% right now. So the Clean Water Fund would be, would, would be cheaper for us for a 20-year bond. However, I know Brian Leclerc did some work today with Bond Counsel, and I think there's an option written into this, which gives the municipality the flexibility to do either or depending upon the rate. And if Brian Leclerc wants to add that, and maybe that, that solidifies Greg your concerns.
Mr. Leclerc, would you like to weigh in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian Leclerc, Burcham Moses. Yes, I, if you take a look at 6.1.2, the next item, which is the actual bond ordinance, I spoke to Bond Counsel about this. And if you'll see in Section 1, it talks about the funding coming from either the Clean Water Fund or bonds of the town of Stratford, or through a combination of Clean Water Fund obligations or bonds sold by the town of Stratford. So there is some flexibility in the method of financing of these. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Timmyak is correct.
Thank you.
I want to just, Chris, I want to thank everyone for the constructive contribution.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
And I, can I?
Go ahead, Greg. What do you have?
Just a request. Would it be possible to consider both this and the next item together, 6.1.2, along with 6.2.1? Or should we vote on separately?
It was, since we, it's issued, the motions are ready. I'm going to, I'm going to just make the call that we're going to vote on them separately. I do appreciate you mentioning that, but we already started the process. I'd just like to continue.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Florick?
Yes, John Florrick. I think the correct motion should be to approve the referral to the ordinance committee, not simply to re, to approve the, the ordinance.
So, Mr. Poisson, you, thank you, Mr. Town Attorney Clerk. Mr. Poisson, you made the original motion. Would you like to just add in Mr. Florrick's statement?
Yes, I guess so. I was just reading what was on the agenda. Didn't say that on the agenda.
Okay, so amend, we'll, we'll change it for Mr. Florrick and Mr. Poisson. So we had discussion on this. I'll call, I'll call for roll call vote on item 6.1.1.
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 6.1.1, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is item, as a follow-up to this, is item 6.1.2. Mr. Poisson, yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to approve item 6.1.2 and refer to the ordinance committee, the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the bonds for the prior motion.
Motion by Mr. Poisson is to send to ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second by Dave Harden.
Second by Mr. Harden. Thank you. Any discussion on this? I think we talked about it pretty well. All right.
Chris, it's.
Greg?
Yes, it's Greg Khan. I, because of historical issues with co-mingling of enterprise funds with general fund, I, I'm going to propose an amendment to Section 8. Section 8 of this is where it authorizes the director of finance in connection to allocate unused funds to public improvements previously authorized. I'd like to amend that to read unused bond proceeds to WPCA improvements, that the WPCA is the liable entity, and the fund should remain dedicated for that purpose.
So, Mr. Can, just for point, so for clarity, sir, just to, you would like to, you're making an amendment to amend item Section 8 per your statement. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leclerc, I have a question on that. Can you, this being that this came and was written up by Bond Counsel, is this, that even being able to be amended per Bond Counsel at this moment?
I, I did, I would suggest that if you're contemplating, if this body is contemplating any amendments of this item, that it be done at the ordinance committee. So Bond Counsel can be present, because this is an ordinance they drafted. These need to be drafted very carefully, given the nature of bond sales and bond ordinances, to make sure that you can, in fact, do this and not jeopardize the sale of these obligations, Mr. Chairman.
So, Greg, can I ask you a question? Would you, would you be amenable to withdraw on your motion? I just want to, I, I hear what you're, what you're saying, but I want to have Bond Counsel. We pay them good money to draft these things. I want to make sure that the, right, and this is still going to ordinance for further discussion.
Yes, that, that the legal counsel and the bond advisor will be available at the ordinance committee to help us consider this at that time. Therefore, I withdraw amendment.
Okay, so, thank you, Greg. Amendment withdrawn. Any further discussion on the original motion? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Paquette will call for a roll call, please.
Yeah, hold on one second.
Mr. Chairman, point of order? Mr. Poisson?
Mr. Chairman, I can't remember. Did somebody second that?
Hmm, maybe not.
I'm sorry. Paquette, can you please check? Thank you. Mr. Poisson?
Um, for 6.2.1? Mr.?
No.
6.1.2.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Harden seconded.
Okay.
No, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Adam Mayor?
Council Poisson was talking about the amendment. The amendment was not seconded. You had discussion, the motion, the motion was made, you incurred discussion, you got opinion from council, and then the counselor withdrew the amendment. It's not seconded.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to second that motion.
So, well, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe you have a motion made to approve the item, I, I'm sorry, a motion made to refer the item to ordinance committee for the public hearing that was seconded. Mr. Khan then made a motion to amend. You asked an opinion. There was no second of that motion by Mr. Khan. So now you have a motion that has been made and has been duly seconded, I believe.
And that's where, and we'll call for the roll call vote with Ms. Paquette.
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 6.1.2, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Margo. Next item on the agenda is 6.2.1, a resolution regarding public health and public safety team grants. Do I have a motion to that?
Chair, if I may make that motion?
Mr. Harden, yes, you may, sir. Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion?
This is a.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ms. Dancho. Any discussion on the item? Nope, actually, if I can, do I have Tammy? Do I have Tammy on the line? And Andrea? Andrea?
Yes, you have Andrea.
Andrea, if you wouldn't mind, give a very brief recap. This is a great grant that you guys worked again on.
We were chosen to pilot a toolkit that was created by NACHO, the National Association of City and County Health Officials, to combine force with public health and public safety to test out their framework, to assist jurisdiction in reducing opioid issues. So we will be implementing specific activities to leverage public safety and public health data to identify opportunities for policy and programmatic interventions and maximize impact.
That's awesome. Thank you again for all of the. Any discussions under this item? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Paquette will call for roll call vote.
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 6.2.1, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Margo. Next item on the agenda, item 7.1, an appointment, under new business appointment of an independent order.
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien, Ninth District.
Mr. O'Brien?
I move that the selection of Blum, Shapiro, and Company PC to conduct the annual audit of accounts be and is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second by Dave Harden.
Seconded by Mr. Harden. Discussion. Dawn, if you could just weigh in on this, being the Finance Director, I believe this is the annual audit.
Sure, this is the annual audit. It was bid a few years back. This is the last year under the contractual obligation, and then there's a two-year extension. So we can continue for two more years with this auditing firm if we so choose.
Thank you. Thank you, Dawn. Any, any further discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Paquette will call for a roll call, please.
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, this is the roll call vote for Agenda Item 7.1, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Margo. Last item on the agenda, I'll turn to entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
I got, Mr. Perillo, I got you on that, sir. Do I have a second? All in faith? Aye.
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 Thank you all. You have one.